Maybe daughter please fight right, right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Roll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Ryan Criselli, board member.
Michael Smith, board member.
Chris Nasmith, superintendent.
Making order.
Career Colonel Staff.
Lisa Arnold, staff.
A.D. Walker, staff.
Eric Smith, staff.
Approval of the board meeting minutes for August ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for August ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. I'll move for the approval of consent agenda. Also, can there be an emotion made and seconded or is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's a nice one.
Sorry. Sorry. Do you mind opening up that board agenda packet? I still have this one left to do. It happens every time I open up something. So we had our recent admin retreat where we took the data that came in and we mapped out our plans as a district and administrative team on how we would like to kind of begin closing some of these student achievement gaps. So, um, so Eric, if you might go ahead and just begin me now. I've left out of finished. And our goal has been, how can we improve our post-secondary performance, our post-secondary achievements? It's just been a priority of our district and how can we track that? And that's what's been a part of our, our district strategic plan. So I wanted to kind of put the board packet of work our administrators have come up with on how we feel that we can close and improve student achievement, or how can we close the achievement gap and improve student performance across the board as a district? So, and with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and share some of the work we came up with. So, uh, with our UDL teams and our universal design learning, uh, UDL is about how can we help our students meet standard? We run about a pretty high student on an IEP rate. We run about sixteen percent district-wide average. Uh, twelve, fourteen percent at the elementaries, and that actually increases. One of our concerns with an increasing IEP rate is, it means one of two things that we're not happy with are happening. It means that either A, we have students not being identified for special services earlier, or it means that we are academically regressing students. And students are not, you know, making one year gain in one year's time, so our rate of special education is going up. So we began looking at our students on special service rate. We identified is like over fifty percent of our students are not meeting benchmark standards on average. So it means half of our students are below grade level. For us, that feels like it's an area of concern. And even more so of our special education, of our special education students are behind academically. So our UDL team began breaking down areas of where we have low student achievement, green being where it's high level. Middle, at the elementary middle, you'll notice that that yellow and red is increasing at the elementary middle. And, and, and how can we kind of target those areas? You'll see this in math, elementary math, more green. Notice that bar at the bottom, more yellow. So that means year after year, we're growing in the rate of students to, sorry, we're, we're growing in the rate of students not to standard. That's just not the right direction. We want to show that students, that green bars should be getting larger year after year after year after year. And again, this is data that we didn't have, we didn't have until this past year to really target those areas that we want to improve. You can kind of see this map down here. This is based upon state, SBA, so state assessment results. And then, uh, reading, so. When, so our UDL team meant, we identified that we need to begin full inclusion. Again, what's happening is students get identified for special ed. We want more students out. We want to identify our program of practice. And, and what we identified is, we need to make sure that we've mapped out all of our academic standards. All of our teachers know what their standards are. And then we're building a plan on how the students are going to be aligned to that standard. So are the, is the instructional material or the content that's being covered in each of our classes standardized in line? And this is kind of those measurements of success. It's, are we aligning the individual student needs to the MBL work, which is master-based learning? That's that work that was done today in our summer institute work. Are we actually scheduling and reviewing those IEPs, how we're meeting the individual needs of our students? And so I wanted to kind of share that's the first group progress on what our plan is that we want to tackle for the MBL work. This will become a discussion item in a board presentation at a later meeting on how this work is coming. I wanted for this board packet for you to have what our administrative team have identified. So that's our UDL teamwork. Questions on the UDL teamwork? No, it's your board. Our early learning team group identified that we have about forty-two point eight-six overall kindergarten readiness. It's up, we're about thirty-five percent of that year, uh, over a year ago. Um, we want to hit a fifty percent kindergarten readiness rate, um, moving forward. Uh, our female rate runs about forty-eight percent, our male kindergarten readiness rate runs at about thirty-six percent. Which means we realize that there's room to target our male population pre-kindergarten. And some of the strategies that our early learning group has identified is that we need to begin expanding upon the badge book work that happened last year. Um, one of the big positives last year was we had eighteen percent of our kindergartners to standard at the start of the year. Finished the year with eighty-three percent of our kindergartners to standard. Um, so start of the year eighteen percent, finish the year eighty-three percent. And we do feel that the mapping out and alignment of the badge books and the standards was a huge impact or huge reason for that. So the, kind of the early learning team feels next step is let's replicate the success of the badge books. Build a pre-K early learning badge book. How can we begin supporting with the early learning partners to push the badge books and the trainings out to our early learning partners and our families? So everybody has access to those early learning standards. And then how can we begin kind of building community, parent nights, early learning nights, and really have that work pushed out? So everybody knows, my child, it's working on these skills, they will truly be kindergarten ready. So that is the work of our early learning team, and that's kind of the preview of the progress or you'll be getting when we move on to that. An update on how do we want to close that early learning rate? So this is the work that our early learning team has said that they can tackle.
Can, can you just clarify, on the like forty-something percent kindergarten readiness? Is that, um, to, uh, meaning all five or six domains? Is that what the readiness score?
Yes, that's the average of all domains.
So we're saying that of our kids that walk in the first day of kindergarten, obviously somewhere around forty to fifty percent of them are not at true kindergarten readiness. But the eighteen percent, if we're talking about the eighteen percent, that's a different comparison.
That's a different comparison.
Because the eighteen percent is saying, on day one of kindergarten, only eighteen percent of our kids know everything they should know by the end of the year.
Eighteen percent are where they should be at this point in the month of kindergarten. So off kindergarten standard. So the forty-two percent is ready to start day one of kindergarten. The eighteen percent is kindergarten standards. And that's month two of kindergarten standard. So one's an I-ready assessment and one's the walk kids assessment.
But we're not really, but that would say that in a month's time, we dropped like forty percent of where we're at, right?
Not entirely. So the walk kids assessment is the kindergarten assessment. There's going to have reading, you're going to have like, um, language and math, but then you're also going to have, um,
Social emotional.
Social emotional skill, and that's across a six benchmark indicator.
Right.
Uh, when you move into the I-ready assessment, it is literally literacy and math.
Okay.
And it's not, it does not include four of the areas that the walk kids assessment. So when we look at forty-two percent, Elma students do really, really, really good on physical knowledge. The knowledge of their body. And, and by that, I mean like how to walk, how to talk, can you throw a ball? Um, like they, they have this good physical understanding. Uh, we rate low in the language and math and cognitive function. Those are our three low points. So when you see the forty-two percent, that's the average of our three really, really high points, which includes like that physical ability and the three low points. So it's a different assessment.
Okay.
When I say eighteen percent, that is literacy and math. It's just two of the six.
It's on basically like September skills that they should have.
That's right, based on September literacy skills. So when I say forty-two percent, forty-two point eight-six percent of last year's kindergartners on a six-point assessment tool were too standard.
Okay, thanks, that makes sense.
And if we broke that down to just literacy and math, that would be lower.
That would be lower.
And that would be much more representative of the eighteen percent I gave you.
Okay, thank you.
So our Elma students do sit kind of closer to that twenty percent rate on their reading, on where you should go to read. Like, have I seen a book? Do I understand words on where you want to be when you're entering kindergarten? Um, and, and that would drive that gap because then when we move into school assessments away from the walk kids assessment, it is much more heavy on can you read, can you count, can you count to ten, do you understand numbers? So, um, it's, it shifts the assessment.
And there's really not a time that we go back with the district and we visit the walk kids. It's just that initial entry of kindergarten.
That's right. There is no point as a district where we get to go back and address pockets. It's a state kindergarten readiness assessment. So, um, we shift after that walk kids point. But we do think the walk kids assessment does kind of create a kind of a broad area of where our students are. Again, Elma students do really, really good on physical ability, way higher than state average. So things like kids are outside playing, that's a good thing. That's how we combine that with like, you know,
Numeracy.
Numeracy and literacy.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer that? So we do, so with that in mind, we like the, the badge book process that we've done in kindergarten because we feel like it worked really well. But we do think a crease, an independent preschool badge book that we can push out to our early learning partners, we can push out in our own early learning center and our families that say these are the things that is more closely aligned to walk kids is important because we should, we do believe that that physical awareness, the social emotional learning, the cognitive function is still an important skill. So that preschool badge book will be kind of mapped
To one.
To walk kids. Because I don't think it's a bad thing that Elma students grow up all very, very well. You know? But we shouldn't not do that. So this is the work that we're working on on our early learning side. Again, we had incredible success for kindergarten, and we think that we can expand upon that success. Just the biggest thing that we're missing is, is do we know what our students need to know? Our current college readiness team, um, one of our targets is we have a thirty-three percent post-secondary going rate. And one of the conversations we talked about is that's a nineteen percent, I think fifty-two percent is the state average. About nineteen percent lower than the state average of students pursuing a post-secondary education. Uh, and, and that's through, that's any university in-state, out-of-state, um, private and community technical colleges. Big question came up, what about apprenticeships? Well, most apprenticeships coursework is ran by the state community college system. So even if you're an apprenticeship, you might be tied through. So the, the unaccredited private technical colleges, like a Perry Tech and Yakima might not qualify, but a Global Park Technical College, which is a state one, would qualify. So you get nuanced, but by the time you start getting down there, you're splitting hairs. We're talking about one or two Elma students. Um, so you could say thirty-three percent, should have been thirty-six percent. If you're talking about three, you just run, graduated, let's say roughly a hundred kids. So each kid is one percentage point. So a, a, a non-accredited technical school might not. Military is unique, most AIT now is ran by the military's university. So then, right, based upon what job they had in the military. They did basic infantry with a non-credit bearing, turn, you know, say army, AIT probably wouldn't count. But if you had a credit bearing job training in the military, the military now has their own college, and that would count. So there's some nuance in that number, but again, you're splitting hairs on one or two. We feel that by this next year, we really should target just the ten percent, like go up by ten percent. To improve that rate. Uh, we're not going to be yet state average, but again, some of the issues we have is our students are not taking the caters, the admissions requirements. But a thirty percent FASA filing, that meant that's due in October. So that's a figure that has to take place right away. So that means seventy percent of our students are deciding not to pursue financial resources to pursue a post-secondary education. And that's due in October, so we're kicking the switch on that October deadline is, you know, we have two months to try to fix just the, do this, how do I phrase this? Then the FASA filing is indicative of student goals. And if the students are not filling out the paperwork to get a, get the money, that's effectively saying in October, they've decided not even to go. So there's a lot of like soft junior, sophomore, and freshman work to drive that number. So a goal of ten percent, it feels pretty ambitious when you're going to make the most amount of your impact on your seventh and eighth graders. But we do think that we can drive the amount of students pursuing a post-secondary education. But sitting nineteen percent below the state average is not the statistic that we're happy with. We feel like, and, and we showed that, I think we showed that in June. You can actually see the ongoing rates since two thousand eight has been increasing. So since two thousand eight to now, less and less students have been pursuing a post-secondary education. So we really think that we need to put something that's in place to curb that trend. Um, this one has a lot because we feel like there's a lot of deliverables. So starting tomorrow is our professional development day. Actually, a lot of these things that we saw are already in place now. Today was our UDL and master-based learning work, the teachers' foundation mapping out standards. Tomorrow's our STEM career college readiness day, where it's aligning those academic standards to us in the career field while we're sending our teachers out on field trips to see how standards align to our industry partners across the community. That training is tomorrow. So it's like implementing, we're adding an advisory period, make sure that FASA is done, all the applications are done. You know where you want to go, you have a planning in place, we're adopting a new science curriculum. Make sure we have a data tracking to see where our students want to go and your high school programs aligned to where our students want to go. So installing the new science advisory software to make sure that we're actually building programs built off of secondary interest in where they want to be. Um, and then aligning that high school beyond plan, so we're actually seeing the data on where our students want to be. We need to increase our dual credit rate. A lot of our work on the, uh, the redefining ready work is students who have twelve or more usable dual credits are sixty-four percent likely to go into post-secondary education. Statistically, we know that fact. We've had an increase in our Arizona State University partnership. Students actually knock out a bachelor's degree completely, totally free of charge. More and more families are taking advantage of that ability to align and take dual credit coursework. And it really highlight the, and then launching, that's actually, you're approving that tonight. The on-the-spot admissions, that's on the board agenda later on. That would actually bring the universities and students to apply for university and be accepted to university right here from our campus. They don't have to go anywhere, they don't have to apply, we can walk through the application process. We've learned that the application process is a major point of rift, and we can actually drive beyond the spot of law work here, so let's just give it. So, um, as you can see, it's pretty robust, but I think very viable. Christie, since you're here, is anything you'd like to add to that?
No, there's a lot of work to do.
There's a lot of work to do.
But I do have a great career college readiness committee, so that's what's made it applicable. And we also know that it's going to benefit our students greatly.
Um, a question came up that says, I don't know if that's a right data aspect, but when we've shared that data. That data is, it's a quantitative viable data, it's not survey data. We're not running surveys on students. That's SSID through SSID, so it takes your Washington State student ID number and it tracks it to your college or post-secondary student ID and it latches it on. So when I say thirty-three percent of our students pursuing a post-secondary education in the class of two thousand twenty-one, that is who showed up on day one and took a class. So conversation goes, I know about Johnny Smith and he enrolled, I knew he was accepted in September and they were going to go to, um, blah, blah, blah university or community college. Um, but if they don't show up day one in September, they don't track on that data indicator. It is literally state ID, state ID. So I think the big goal we had, I have one last one. Are there any questions on that one? Is our MBL work? And this is a big one where we took our social emotional learning data and we saw that students valuing at school. Thirty-seven percent of our students value school. Um, it's a drop, sixty-seven percent of our elementary schools, students feel like they have a value at school. Thirty-nine percent of our high school students feel like they have a value at school. Uh, fifty-seven percent of our high, elementary students feel sense belonging, thirty-two percent feels sense belonging. And we think those numbers can be driven by our current college readiness rate. Like if they see how this class is connecting to where I want to go, that valued school rate can go up. What was most concerning, it's not showing here, isn't the percentage. I think you could say, well, most high school students are not a concern. It was when we came back comparable to other districts and we were the zero to nineteenth percentile in the nation. So district to district, we were low. So we want to make sure that we're addressing this concern, that our students are feeling like they're on track where they want to go. So, uh, Mark has been just doing an incredible job leading this work. Uh, we actually built our summer institute, we've mapped out our standards, but it all worked today because I'm building and mapping out and aligning standards to have a vertical alignment, integrate a way that's meaningful to students. That is a hundred percent of what's been going on. And the conversation came up, I don't know where I'm going to fit these standards in with what I'm doing. Well, what you're doing are, like, your job is the standards. Like, that's how we drive our state assessment scores up. That's how we increase our literacy rates, that's how we. So it's just been a very clear effort to make sure everything we do is standards-aligned at that MBL team. And Mark's, Mark's training was today, and, and the UDL training was kind of back into that where we're scaffolding by student need. So I, I think he talks about how today was the kickoff, I think it was a successful kickoff of our staff development training today. Um, and that's what we have as far as our admin retreat and what our admin have said that we're going to be taking care of this school year to improve student learning. Any questions? A lot of work to do. Like I said, a lot of these are kind of ongoing trends, and our big goal is that we would like to curb the trends.
And while there are five individual things really growth, then any one of them should trigger growth in. Oh, right, I mean, I know you're working on them in pieces, but, um, I don't think they're in isolation further, which you're not, you're not saying. I guess I'm just saying it's a positive thing that any growth will drive growth.
We, we, we feel really firmly on that. Like, if we drive the social emotional learning work that students find value of their education, that should drive your career and college readiness work because the big indicator we found is, um, social emotional learning is not like we're going to come in and have a birthday party every day. And it's going to be, it's, 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 I can endure the hard stuff because I understand where I'm going with the hard stuff. Like, I know I'm learning this literacy concept or this numeracy concept because this is going to provide value with the rest of my life down here. So as you build out your career and college readiness indicators, it'll actually have an impact on your social emotional learning indicator. Because it's like, oh, I get why I have to be able to identify exponents, or I know why I need to be able to technically communicate. Right? Because one indicator drives another indicator. Um, basic literacy, I mean, you must have basic literacy to drive into a secondary performance. So, um, it's, I mean, I think if we look at our administrative, uh, study on career, uh, learning for careers, and there's four drivers, uh, I think it talks about the three drivers, but there's a fourth driver on what, like, how, how students complete a post-secondary education? Well, number one is, where are you going to go learn? I mean, if you don't know what you're going to major in and you don't know why you're getting a post-secondary education, you're, you're, that's the most likely reason why you will drop out. The second reason is academic preparedness. If you can't pass an English one-on-one class or a all-island math class, then you're most likely to drop out. Reason two, three is, uh, financial support, just run out of money, which is why that FASA rate, that thirty percent FASA filing rate is so important to us because it means seventy percent of our students have not organized the school resources. And then the fourth reason is kind of creating those social networks. So if you can target like, like MBL work and target the academic preparedness because we know our standards are aligned to passing an English one-on-one course and our current college readiness and our cell work is aligned for the pathway, you know where you want to go through education. Those are the two leading driving indicators in completing a post-secondary education. A rate that we sit nineteen percent lower than the state average. So if we can drive those two, even disconnected from the current college readiness work, the current college readiness indicator will go. And, and this is not, um, it's not bad, good, anything, it's just, these are the numbers. Um, whether we like the numbers, dislike the numbers, love the numbers, just the numbers really don't carry any emotion. It's just like, this is just what they are. And if we're not happy with it, then we need to put things in place to say, we need to take this up, that we need to improve these numbers. So if we're not happy with those numbers.
All right, uh, we're going to move on to launch the Washington University website, Parents Square. Eric Smith. I love the look of it, I love it.
It is a great adjustment. Quick comments.
Yeah.
Before we live last Thursday, uh, so we're, there's still definitely, um,
You don't have to.
Work to do on the, on the sub-pages, uh, as far as, because all of that, we vibrated all the content over. And now we're going to have a plan, uh. We got the homepage, our quick links, and the strategic plan, uh, upcoming calendar. Um, but now we'll be going into the sub-pages. And then some of them that are like, need to be, uh, accurate, and now like athletics, things that are best used. And, uh, that, uh, those have been updated in transportation. But, uh, it's going to now go, uh, already, uh, second week of September, we'll be, it's due again. And, uh, there are education staff, and so we're going to go through, say, that's how we'll sharpen and page clean. Like, if it's outdated information there, obviously. Overall, we continue to improve upon what's here. So I'm going to get the hero images, uh, through there, so there's some pictures that, this was a photo day, uh, that we did last spring, which happened to also be the cat box, we got some great pictures on that one there. The quick links, uh, hopefully, uh, this is, uh, doing the best guess of what, sometimes I don't, I'm not, like, what do families need? What do they have the hardest time finding, uh, we go to the website? And that's, and so any input, uh, we wanted, we want to know that. So, um, online enrollment registration, we'll leave, that's a two separate terms, we're truly trying to, almost for those new students to the district registrations for all returning students. It's an annual process, uh, file forms, scour, uh, appointment, and then these buses, Kayla, this is, I can't do that. Brand new, like, rollout, uh, the full, uh, stops, we were talking about that, maybe wants to put on the, uh, website. So hopefully, uh, it's there, uh, early next week. Uh, so just making it, uh, obviously we want to make it as, as easy as possible for families to, uh, find the information they need. So if you hear, like, hey, we're still struggling to find this one piece of information, how can we, uh, better certain that will be created? The, all of this is the ready for flight, and a lot of what Christopher's talking about is now in the, um, uh, the strategic plan. Uh, and so this information is now, we're still building on this, because this gives a little bit better look of what we're, what we're set pages, we would focus on this. But each one of those pictures will take you to, uh, the issue lines and your mission data.
I think the big one is, is we wanted our community to see, like, this is the starting point on the data. We built the data, this is how we're doing on students meeting standard kindergarten readiness data, post-secondary going rate data. And we built in the interest of transparency on that strategic plan. We wanted to have the data mapped out so families and communities could see it. So that's there. I mean, any family member would like to see our career and college readiness data, if that's what it is, they can go look at it right on the strategic plan website, and we're targeting those figures, and we're going to drag those figures up.
And, uh, these announcements, we don't like, I don't want to go with this right now, we're kind of locked into this template, but I think we're going to be keeping that up there. So, uh, that's their calendar. Calendar is really working on our public calendar that they get, uh, for their buildings, I did their public calendars. And it pushes here, and it's been pushing here, but we try to extrude, that's even more, like, always have to date, connect it. It's also pushing to Parents Square right now, so parents, well, they app or they, they register, all of those same calendars will be pushed into, depending on where their students at. If the district calendar, sure, and then the elementary calendar, just have an elementary student, yeah, students in multiple buildings, they'll see that inside Parents Square as well. And then the T- And then the teacher can build another layer, so we got the district calendar, building calendar. And if the teacher wants a calendar inside, uh, Parents Square, so that would be all built into the system of parents to see. Hopefully, hopefully it's, it will just continue to get better and better as we uh, work on it, happy with what we want to choose. It's always crazy on the getting everything, with the hard cut out data of, of seventeen, cause that's when I, I've been, it's gonna start charging us again, so. So I'm hopeful from the right start, is there any feedback here or you discover yourself, we want to know. Better for anybody, uh, Parents Square is running, still, we're still working out some. Uh, is it, is the parents on the board, are you feeling like you're getting those, that's coming through, it's fine for you?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, it looks nice, it's clean.
Obviously, it hasn't been really robustly used and teachers have been locked out until just today, right, just unlocked uh, for the, because we hold that care out there for online registration. And so uh, probably we have not from the elementary families that, that we unlocked Parents Square on the teacher side, so I know elementary teachers are gonna start to communicate with families today. But the first time we made this week, uh, so we have a really good, as far as to do with it, ninety-nine, twenty-nine percent of our families all have contactable numbers. Uh, there's, there's three main ways that we can communicate out of it, through the posts, uh, which is how teachers are going to the buildings, district. And teachers um, will communicate in these posts, it gives a little bit of a social media build and graphics and permission links. Uh, they can do lots of different things, they can do RSVP, like so we can have a calendar, a request, or if they need something in classroom, volunteers in the classroom. There's lots of ways that they can have sign-ups for parents right there, uh, inside the application. Uh, and a lot of this is still we need to, uh, now we need to really, now we're using this year, now re-watch it to parents. And to make sure that we encourage for families to register, to put their application settings in if they want. And I do one last, we rewrite the notification settings to see if things that I don't know, that I watched went the way I wanted it to, so. We can get that out, that happens, we can, we need to change your settings, you might wanna go look at it, we can't, cause we just did a district wide. Just make them all, so text and email is on for everybody until you want to. Uh, right now, it, it was like it's on the most people, I still, well, everyone is turned off, did we actually change the settings and it's off, so. We're gonna ask the shout, uh, change at the end of this week and we can get to that, so. Check this out. Uh, besides the posts, then uh, we can send out uh, direct messaging on there. Excuse my testaments, uh, staff, but they directly send an individual or a small group of individuals, uh, direct message. So if they have a text on, it's nice, text. They can keep it back if there are the trans, they can all those features. Uh, so these are the two ways that staff, uh, that teaching staff, all administrators in the district communicate this way as well. But then uh, these, this would be the two ways that's limited for our staff. And you get to the smart alerts and the emergency alerts, that would be just at the district level where we can override every setting and we can uh, send out. And the nice part about a smarter alert is we can, we can push that out and if you have, uh, we really, we need every family to get it. But we understand that even underneath this, I wanna get a voice call, so uh, we can send them a smarter alert out. And if the, if the text message fails for some reason, they didn't, they didn't voice call. That like text message, it's gonna reverse, I'm checking this with most people. So that's a nice feature, we have that urgency where it's gonna just, it's gonna text you. Uh, I think we're, they say it's a new product and it is, kind of like staff, I haven't really, we'll talk to staff on Monday, please do. Just breakfast. I'm hoping that it's gonna be able to be a product or a, a platform to help.
Eric's working really hard and this has been a big lift. Um, software is not just a big lift, it's the, it's the interfacing with our families and teachers and parents. Cause the big concern and the big pushback we had is, well, I really, really like Class Dojo. Um, and kind of working with our teachers, I know you really like Class Dojo, but I need you to move into this district-wide model, cause it's not um, customer-friendly. Cause if you have a parent who has multiple children, it's like, well, I've got Remind for this parent, I've got Class Dojo for this parent. I thought this, or me sorry, for this teacher, this teacher has Class Dojo, this teacher has Remind, this teacher has this. The district is gonna send out an email through Skyward, but I'm gonna get a text message on this and then the phone call is gonna come in here. And there's about nine hundred different ways information comes through and it's all different. And you have to have about sixteen different apps on your cell phone, and you have to be able to know of your sixteen different apps, which child, which sport, which activity, which this. So meeting with all of the teachers going, I know you really like Class Dojo. But it's not really serving the best interest of our parents and I know you really like this, but it's not serving the best interest of our parents and I know you really like this. And really kind of driving the websites, the website holder information. And the Parents Square comes a way to have a centralized communication tool, so that way parents have one. Parents can decide how they're getting information, whether it's, you know, email or text message. Parents have control how that's gonna come to them and we have one central place where that comes out, it's just been a major, major lift on Eric's part. Um, Eric told me yesterday, I don't have.
It's a more.
I don't have more bandwidth, I'm really tired, this has been a big lift, um, but it's, but it has been. And I just need Eric to know, like, I've just really, really, really appreciated how much work he's put in to getting this off the ground.
See, it's, it's obviously not about, it's startup pickups for sure. I'm not quite the, the athletic side of it, I talked a lot, um, it doesn't pull right now, it does not, or it does not pull from the activity sections. It's not, uh, that's not a great useful reason, but we can put athletics, we can, that's a competition. Uh, that would be the next thing, probably not right September.
Yes.
One location would really be nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Well, if you want, cause I, now this is gonna be, just change, alright. But I can, if you guys want, I can go put the whole school board in as well.
Oh.
You guys, some of you are already getting it, cause you're kids, I could put you, make sure the whole school works, necessarily you can, as we said, now like district lifestyle, that we guys are part of.
We can let you borrow a kid. That's a great idea.
Yeah, maybe we could really let you borrow.
You're missing a boy at home, I gotta stand.
You know, I have to say, I was a little upset about, you know, all the kids being graduated, but it's kind of nice.
You're dating again.
Yeah.
Right? Teen-year-old's really mouthy.
You know what, all I have to do is.
Save the girls. Thanks.
I get mouthy at work, I can, I'm good.
Okay, um, Chris, you've got it for financial admin restructure.
Uh, conversation came up on a building rename, we're not renaming the buildings, but it has come up that we are. As every school district in the entire state of Washington is going through a major financial restructuring. Um, as a district, we are no different, but our restructuring and as the board knows, has been existing at the administrative level. So uh, as we said, to kind of come through and talk about some of our financial, our, our fiscal restructuring. On uh, on, and then the priority, and we've presented this at multiple board meetings on our financial restructuring. It's kind of starting to seem a bit, uh, we have reduced um, the administrative position at East Chris Harbor High School. Uh, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in administrative salary and thirty thousand dollars of benefits, or about the tune of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, we've made a reduction. Uh, we've reduced the assistant principal at the middle school, again, it's another hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so that's three hundred and forty thousand dollars in production that we've made. And we consolidated the ELL director position into special services. Again, so we've had three administrative positions that we consolidated, we did move Mark Keating into a executive director of teaching learning. And that's really because we haven't completed a curriculum adoption in many years. And we did restructure the high school principal to be a secondary principal over all three buildings. And that also had an educational practical, uh, practical reason on where we had substantial academic loss at each transition point, sixth grade, ninth grade, and three East Chris Harbor High School. So we did do a structure to begin, having one principal over three buildings to ensure that we don't have, we don't have a less than place where you have to track those transitions. So um, we, again, as a district, uh, we've been lucky, we have not done a major reduction in force. Um, as in our neighbors have made, uh, and a lot of them, what has curved that is, we've had, we've had continuous student enrollment growth. But we have done, but we have had similar fiscal issues, but I think a question came up, are you renaming the buildings or redoing the buildings? The middle school is still the middle school, Alma High School is still Alma High School. Uh, but we do have one singular administrator that we presented on restructuring alignment and on fiscal reductions. And all of those have been presented here, but I thought I would address that, that. In fact, actually, I think our facilities department did an incredible job painting the front of the middle school. And it still says the middle school, as it's still the middle school.
I think where some of the confusion came in was on Facebook.
Yeah.
It's coming across as Alma Secondary School.
Yeah, I think they, they added an S.
Should have been an S.
The flyer for the, yeah, yeah, open house kind of sets the whole thing, right? Says, open house for secondary school on the twenty-eighth and it's like, okay, is it all one school or are we three separate schools? What do we got? So there's a confusion.
It is three separate schools, but we did centralize our operations. And that is for, I mean, I'll be blunt, that's for financial reasons. As a district, we have to make reductions and the reductions will either be in the classroom or they'll be in the managerial operational end. And it's every school district in the state of Washington is making reductions and as we present our budget, we present our district budget at the end of every board meeting. But that's right, the second board meeting of every month, we still will be doing a budget update tonight. Um, you will see that as a district, we're not immune to the same financial reductions that's been facing every single other district around us. We have benefited from continuously growing student enrollment, which has allowed us to kind of dodge that. So as a result, we have consolidated our managerial operations. Because our priority was we're gonna make reductions, it needs to not impact students in the classroom. And we need to avoid impact on the stu-, impact on the classroom at all costs or to the best of our ability. And we needed to look at administrative restructuring in order to ensure that that classroom environment is most protected. So um, we'll go deeper in that, you'll, when we get to the budget part, we'll be able to see the, our, our updating and running budget.
I think that um, I mean, it's, I think we now have a clear understanding, but I think it's, this is a big shift in the community and I don't think we can over-communicate. In enough, the way like, the narrative needs to go out enough times and enough community-friendly language that they know the narrative, that they can tell the same story. Yeah, and I don't, I'm not confident that.
Yeah, we, we, sorry, we looked to switch on our Parents Square a few days ago. I mean, our plan was hopefully having that out earlier. And then once these new financial reports come out, now we have the tools in place to put out to our community, kind of the budget constraints that's a district that will face. He said, we're not in a, um, we're not sounding alarms right now, we're cautiously watching it. And we've had sustained student enrollment, so with student enrollment going up, that's what drives your budget. But we are to a point where we've had um, a large amount of administrators and we've made our reductions across administrative positions. To a point where a big alarm bell hasn't necessarily been needed yet to say, like, we're, we're in crisis. Cause we're not in crisis, but it's, it's um, we will be doing continual fiscal restructuring to make sure that we're staying within our means.
I really liked when you shared last year though about um, the, the logic behind using a single principal who's basically out of the building. But this allows two administrators to stay in the building, I get the fiscal side of it, but um, I guess I also want the community here. There's like some really good wisdom about doing that part of it, I think that as a board, that was a collective piece, powerful, and I think that's a. I, I don't know, I'm not saying ignore the fiscal, but I, after you shared that, I guess I would say that was just good financial management, even if we weren't in a budget downfall. That's money we could save to put towards something else, not just because we're in crisis.
I appreciate that, yeah, I mean, I think to kind of reiterate that point, by having one principal and assistant principals, um, part of being an administrator is you have. Other responsibilities that pulls you out of the building, so you're pulling in student, uh, core responsibility or district office meeting. And by having multiple principals, that pulls administrators out of the buildings. By having one principal, it means that we're only pulling one person out and we will guarantee continuity and consistency that there is an administrator and the same administrator in the building at all times. Which means we can guarantee better sustained operations throughout the day.
And I think you did a good job of educating us, yeah, but um, that's just a good community piece.
Can continue.
Yes.
The communication about that.
Yeah.
As especially as a school starts, cause I know people, uh, I know a lot of people are forward-thinking and they're thinking of Parents Square and stuff, but as schools start, it's gonna all start to hit a little bit more, so.
And people wanna know the who, who are we talking to, who is, you know, in each building, they wanna know the structure of it, how it works.
Absolutely.
Okay, communications and comments, is there anyone from ETO? ET, E E S P? E Copa? Admin? Any persons to be heard? A new business, we have approval of out-of-area teaching assignments, Mr. Smith.
I'll make a list of everybody that's now, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, I don't think this is, I think we'll have hopefully one more, the hope, but still maybe another one or two that we have. And some of them may just be briefly that they're out of area because uh, of course. They might have it.
Okay.
I'll move for the approval about a barrier teaching assignments.
All second. And a motion made in seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Motion carries, approval of basic, minimum basic ed requirements.
Um, this is our annual, you can catch the um, list of uh, everything that we have certified to the state that will be needing our signature. Approval of our minimum basic education requirements. No, it's fine, it's, we just spend hours reading this.
It's very long.
I'd move for the approval of minimum basic ed requirements.
And a motion made in seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries, approval to accept bid for dairy products for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Ms. Arnold.
Um, I'd like you to approve Dairy Fresh, but I would like contingency with that. Um, when we use federal money to pay for food within our program, we have to make sure. The company is not suspended and debarred through the federal government and Washington state. Um, they did not, we have their entity, their renewal through the site. So I'm pending audit approval to use these eyes, otherwise we're going to be punting come Wednesday.
You meaning, Lisa, I'm sorry to interrupt, you're meaning not that they have for production like the milk is bad, degraded kind of thing. You're meaning just their registration.
Yes, and by law, they're supposed to be registered, not suspended or debarred. And right now the registration is not current, so I'm waiting to see what the auditor says we need to do. Um, can we use them, is there something we have to do? But I wanted approved because if he comes back and says, go ahead, you just need to do this, I need this done by Wednesday so we can move forward with it.
Do we have another option?
Hmm.
That's what I thought.
Head up to the dairy.
We don't know, it may be a lot more expensive what we come up with to get through. It might be getting a hold of these guys and saying please register, I'm not sure.
That's what I was wondering if we know why they haven't registered.
No, we do not. Um I tried to contact them, I haven't got a return.
It's weird.
I'll move to approve we need to accept the bid dairy products for the twenty three twenty four year.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very strange, I always see dairy fresh truck and I haven't seen one for months. I always see one on this road.
Usually delivering to schools.
Yikes, no, I'm like even like their ice cream, because they like deliver cascade ice cream and all that, like I haven't.
Have you reached out to other schools, do they use the same?
Yeah, for who they, yeah, they use dairy fresh, it's the only one here around the. Okay, because you can't get it from Erica any. Approval to accept France bakery bid for bread product products for twenty three twenty four school year.
They're the only ones that bid that deliver out in this area, they are on the list and they are approved.
I'll move to accept the France baker bid, bread product in twenty three twenty four.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to accept the Petrocard bid for fuel products for twenty three twenty four.
Petrocard only bid as well, longstanding relationship. Same carbon system, same car dollars.
If we bid out somebody else, would it caught, would it be a more expensive startup if it was someone else? I'm just asking because if it's the only bid, is there a lesser um price out there?
I do not believe so, they were very competitive last year as well. Usually competitive bids were actually increased in the diesel costs as well.
Nice.
I'll move for the approval to accept Petrocard bid for fuel products for twenty three twenty four.
Second. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to accept quote for solar charging station for the electric bus.
Yeah, uh this is part of the Department of Ecology grant that we received last year. So second electric bus has arrived, it will be hit the road next week. Part of that grant was seventy five thousand towards an infrastructure. We have a charger that can charge both buses on during the day and one at night, uh so. Discussed and decided that uh we cut into that electricity bill with that infrastructure money and. As you can see in the quote, um this the latest quote does not have a ten percent uh made in US discount. If they do get that granted, uh then they will just add more panels to the building to get us up to that. All part of the seventy five K. All grand money.
Can be with all my questions. Can those panels be used for other things in the future? Are they solely or just for the charging, is that how that works? I'm just curious.
I was wondering the same thing, is it going straight back to our grade?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, because I'm like, hey, man, we got them on there, like, what are we doing with that?
And when the building was built, there was there was a separate panel for the possibility of infrastructure advancement and they're now using that. Yes, basically it should cover even with our uh projected sunlight and what have you, um it should cover at least one of the buses every day.
I'll move to approve to accept the quote for solar charging station for electric bus.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh approval to accept the thousand dollar donation from the Alma football boosters for weight room improvements.
Heard that with me, um it's just approval for a thousand dollar donation um from the football boosters to go to the weight room. He's been on a big project to ensure the equity of donations coming in on how is it accessible to all students, so. Or approval to accept the donation.
I'm with the approval to accept thousand dollar donations from Alma football boosters for weight room improvements.
It's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries, sorry, forgot to ask if there's discussion. Prove for the EHS cross country to travel to seaside Oregon nine twenty two through nine twenty three.
This is a cross country meet at Camp Rilea, uh the track and cross country boosters have donated the hotel costs and meals and we're seeking approval for a out of uh out of state travel for the uh cross country team.
So under the estimated expenses, Chris, of the the hotel and the meals are like boosters, the others out of.
Yeah, the others would be out of the athletics budget, which would include the registration fee, which is not um. Nice part about seaside is travel down Highway one oh one, so it's not much further than where they traditionally travel. And then you'll see the budget code, I mean, this is part of our board goal last year was making sure that you know where you're making, you know how it's being paid for, so you'll see that we've uh got the budget code that's tied to the athletics budget code, we've identified the boosters donation. So then that way you kind of track down to um what specific bill costs. Then this form is also inclusive of that, we just approved a thousand dollar donation for the football boosters to cover the weight room. That wasn't tied to travel or anything, so you approved that as a singular donation. This would also be inclusive of that approval of the twenty six hundred dollars in boosters donation to cover the meals and registration. Because it's it's noted within here as a singular document, so you're you're technically making, you're going to make one motion of approval. But you're actually approving two things, you're approving a twenty six hundred dollar donation from the boosters. And you're approving the travel for out of state, so you're kind of servicing two legal obligations on the board.
Yeah.
I'll move for the approval for the EHS cross country to travel seaside.
I'll second. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
If there's true, it's time to share it. Sharon's pretty real quick.
It does look nice.
Now all approvals, this does not, this did not exist before, this was a board goal last year. Where we actually know where students are going, what to cost, and then we actually have budget codes and now we're down. We actually know the board is approving what things cost, where it's coming out of what budget account and those specific donations. So this was a big undertaking that we worked on with board last year.
Right.
I feel like fiscal responsibility, it's probably important to know when we're moving, who's going where, how is it being paid for?
Uh approval of resolution two dash two three two four retired teachers as substitutes.
This is an every year resolution that we do, it allows us to use retired teachers up to eight hundred and sixty seven hours per year.
I'll move for the approval of resolution two twenty three twenty four retired teachers as substitutes.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution three dash two three two four authorization for petty cash and impressed accounts.
This allows me to put out petty cash in the buildings, so they have it for small bill payment. Um kids registering for something, make them write a check at their desk, as you know, accounts available takes fifteen days to get a check. So this is quick, everybody's listed to get approval, to be able to handle many. Um and it's going to each building or person to manage.
I'll move for the approval of resolution three dash two three two four, the authorization to kind of cash and press counts.
I think Michael got it.
Yeah.
We've been seconding so many of them. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution four dash two three two four, district investments.
And this resolution allows me, Chris, to invest district funds through the county charter.
I'll move for the approval of resolution four two three two four, district investments.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh approval to participate in the guaranteed admissions program or GAP, Christie.
This was a program that um was alluded to in our career college readiness strategies. Uh Chris has already kind of talked about it, but this is in agreement with school district and um the program so that they can collect collect data and then work with our junior and then we can be able to have our juniors and seniors be a part of this program. Um and then we can track uh whether the communicators getting a two point on GPA and more. And really, the goal is is to get more knowledge out, more information and conversation out to our students about what is college readiness and these things, so that they're ready for post-secondary admissions.
The big event that culminates with this is you want to talk about the big, like, what I'd like.
Do you want me to talk about?
Because it's really cool.
It's about our tour or the fair that we have.
Uh the GAP is uh, yeah, that that.
Guaranteed admissions.
And what it actually like what took them out and do.
Yes, so the colleges, I mean, the colleges are basically guaranteeing that these students will be accepted into the state of in our Washington in-state universities. Um another um opportunity that will be connected with this is that we're pushing to have um a career college fair. Uh that our students will also have that on the spot acceptance too.
So for example is you had a daughter apply, get accepted. Western would be right here, you apply, a few minutes later, they tell you you're in, it's all done on the spot, you do it a part of your school day. It's not that sitting at home working through your essays to say you hit these benchmarks, you're in, just go ahead and do it. And then the admissions advisor just helps the student get their application ready, together, done, and apply, like right here on the spot.
What I also like about this is now we're actually having intentional conversations and work. I think that's what we forget, I think we have, we talk about it, I don't think we're as intentional as we're as far as career readiness and post-secondary readiness.
So first board action on how we want to move on that. And like I said, we're nineteen percent lower than the state average, I would like to be very much higher than state average. It is the first effort in getting that ten percent benchmark improvement next year, it's just eliminating that riff point so students don't have to figure out like, I don't even know how to go online and apply. So don't worry about it, they're right here, you're going to do your application, admissions advisor is going to do it with them hand in hand, and then they will find out in fifteen minutes if they're in. It's just you need the minimum benchmark you're in.
Now, if we can find an efficient system for fast, it will be. I know all of you will laugh because you, well, except for Michael, but. Well, he gets it, but parent, it's hard. It is a no idea one.
Well, now that college payments are resuming, we just have to access password. Yeah, I thought I was done.
I'll move for the approval to participate in the guaranteed admission program.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget report.
Um you guys should all have them in your pocket, and I'm going to apologize because I forgot mine on my desk. I do not even know what the funding fund balance is off the top of my head.
Give that to you. More than seven, yeah, more than seven, less than five. That's what Stephanie's answer was, you don't like that?
There you go, well, can you do the cash?
I am, I'm on that one.
Flow chart, shall we fund balance month?
Come on, Brandon, open the right one.
Which one?
It should be monthly, it should be right here.
Month and uh right there.
I'm on the wrong chart.
There you go.
Oh, I was on the right chart.
Our ability to push a few things more to ESSR this year. Um I've been able to raise the fund balance of our um our fund balance. Um anyway, sorry, um so we're looking good, we're trying to use up our ESSR, we have about one point five to use up this year. So we're looking at um putting whatever we can to it.
Me as a district, um we got the ESD district comparison, so actually I don't even feel I'll just be really shameless and boasting about this. Most districts across the region did mass hiring, and then when the federal money went away, mass layoffs. Um in fact, Alma is the only school district you can see that has had consistent student enrollment and reduction in staffing. It's not been this, it's like a heart monitor, but the only school district in the entire region on our staffing changes, and then so we actually still have quite a bit of federal ESSR money left over. Not that we don't plan on using it, but because of our mapping on academic standards. Last year, we adopted our board policy to align to instructional materials adoption. Is to use that money to adopt uh instructional materials curriculum aligned to the standards. So that way we have in-class content aligned to academic standard. So we hung on to that money for two reasons, A, to adopt board policy. And option two was we needed to make sure our standards were up to date, what we're trying to teach in our classes. So we actually have quite a bit of ESSR money left over to ensure by the end of this year our students are having content to match and improve those student achievement scores. So that's why we have a lot of federal ESSR money left over.
I told you that would be a dip in June and the other dip, and now we're back up, that money comes in in the next month. Um August, we might have another little dip, but it shouldn't be that big. Um mainly because we have people that are leaving and getting their sick leave paid out. Um but most of that was done in June, and we maybe have five or six that are going out in August, so it won't be as big as a downwind as I thought it might be.
Yeah.
Any questions on the budget reports and how are you liking for readability, understandable? I'm hoping that I really don't need to say anything and you guys can see it's transparent. I'm trying to be as transparent as I can.
Gives you kind of an example of our projected fund balance.
About your revenue, seeing what's coming in, and this sheet here kind of gives you your up, your down compared to budget. Um a quick explanation of what's going on. And then visuals that show it, and then you have each by revenue, then your expenditures, we show our fund balance. Um the last four sheets are all funds, and I'm required by law to submit those to you guys each month. They're just very hard to read in my book, if you don't understand the coding for schools.
Just for um knowledge of like how it's projected, is there a, is there some sort of factor that you use when you are projecting what we would receive for those timber dollars? Because I know it's down from from the projections, like six thousand, but I mean, do they give you a formula to you?
What I can do is I can call the county and they tell me what they are projecting out.
Oh, okay.
But it doesn't mean they're going to actually get them.
Sure.
So my projection is based on that and.
I mean, it's close.
It's a yes.
It's pretty close, I was just curious, I was like, no, it's not, it's not too terribly off considering what it could look like, so, okay.
So that's what I do.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions or comments for Lisa?
No, not for Lisa, I don't know, I mean, we always talk about ESSR and I know we all know what it is, but if anybody watches it. You want to explain what ESSR funds is?
It's our federal COVID money, every school district across the nation got money for COVID or COVID response. A lot of districts across the state staffed and hired. We did not, we did not staff, we actually used that money, we felt like it was not in the best interest to take temporary money and bring on an employee and eliminate an employee. So it's also why kind of bringing all of the things we're doing together. Um we've been preserving that money for materials adoption. Make sure that what our teachers are teaching aligns to what we're teaching. Which, if you like, it's an amazing segue into the superintendent report. Which, if you like, it's an amazing segue into the superintendent reports, and I can talk about our summer institute time.
Before you talk about that, and then, just to say, so that when people are watching and hearing this, it, it's, it was a great example of how to be good stewards of our future forecasting of our money, because it wasn't sustainable to hire people or responsible to hire them when we couldn't pay for them after the money went away. So, just in case people don't get the layers of that.
At the end of?
June.
June.
That's what I thought.
So, Mark King is our new executive director of teaching and learning. He pulled together today's summer institute, which was on mapping out all of our academic standards. That's really what we've asked our teachers to do. We last year adopted a new board policy on, um, making sure that all instructional materials, it used to be kind of a democratic process, like, I like this English curriculum or social studies curriculum, I vote yes, I vote no. We changed all of our instructional materials adoption process last year. Mark presented on it. On, um, it's not democratic, it's scoring. If you look at the standards, you look at the materials, does this material cover the standards? And the state material that covers the bulk of the standards receives the higher score, and that's how you adopt. Because we have failed multiple instructional materials, because it's like one opinion here, one opinion here, I like this, I don't like this. Um, and we just really needed to be objective. Is it covering what the students are supposed to be learning? So, we adopted a new instructional materials board policy last year. It really sets in today's work on our summer institute work by making sure that our teachers are prepared to map out the standards, aligns to the scoring work that Mark has done, sets the stage for us to use what's remaining of our federal lesser money to complete our instructional materials adoption, to ensure that we can improve our student achievement scores with the most updated content. But we can't afford, have a failed adoption, so that's why we needed to make sure it was objective process. Didn't spend the money, did the Democratic vote, and everyone said, no, we can't agree. That would put us in a pretty bad spot, so we needed to be an objective. What is meeting the standards, because that is what really needs to drive what we're learning. And that's our typical goal. So, I think it was just a really successful last two days. Um, looking at the social emotional aspect on, we don't look at social emotional learning as a curriculum. We look at social emotional learning as a everyday thing as a district. So, lots of states have said, we want a social emotional learning curriculum. We've said, we don't think social emotional is a thing you buy for fifteen minutes a day. Um, and we think, we feel that what drives social emotional is do students find value in what they're learning. Um, I've had days where it's like, it's not a great day at work, I'm really not enjoying myself, but I do come back because I feel like what I'm doing has purpose and value and meaning. And that's really what we think is the most social emotional learning aspect for our students. That's the approach we come. So, that was yesterday, was doing our neural ed or brain-based work, and really connecting our students to the meaning, value, and purpose of what they're learning. And, and we feel that when you find meaning and value, it builds that resiliency. Today was about mapping out standards and aligning to student need. If you're on an IP, how do I accommodate you, but we're still going to meet standard. We're still going to drive a meeting standard.
Tomorrow's work is, uh, let me talk about tomorrow real quick since you're here.
Sure. Uh, tomorrow is STEM and career, career and college readiness, it's the connection. So, we're going to start out the morning with overviewing of what's career readiness, college readiness, STEM, productivity, attitude, I mean, there's just a lot of things, work ethic. And then, um, you know, again, uh, bringing in Portrait of an Elma Eagle. Um, and then at nine o'clock, we're boarding buses and a couple vans, and we're going to five different industry tours. We're going to see our Pacific Bond Company, Briggs Nursery, Port Blakely, and, uh, Southern Pacific Medical Center. And so, we have a hundred and twenty different staff members going in five different directions tomorrow for that three-hour chunk. Um, we're actually really excited about it. Um, the industry partners have been amazing, as you know, and we just, you've heard those names. Um, but I, I think it's going to be, uh, our hope is eye-opening, because we really want our staff to see careers in action. Um, and hopefully, see all types of careers in action. What is skilled labor force? What is professional labor force? Um, looking at automation, looking at how, uh, the things, you know, things have changed exponentially these past twenty-five years. And then we've got to also think about what is the future? And then, how is educators and education going to work with industry partners and industry in order to prepare our next workforce? That we really don't have a clue of what jobs and careers will be out there. But we have skills that we have to have, AKA hence the Portrait of an Elma Eagle, so that we can push that. So, a lot of things, hoping to have good, rich conversation. Um, and a mix of educators from all buildings going to different locations, so hopefully, that has that conversation. And then in the afternoon, we're going to come back and work on STEM activities, so the secondary level is going to work on. Um, uh, they're going to work actually within disciplines. We're going to have six different groups, and they're going to incorporate STEM into a holistic, uh, lesson that would, in the case like for ELA, focus on ELA, but incorporate STEM, yada, 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 and do some different things. And then, um, at the elementary, we'll do, we're going to set up nine different stations and rotate through there. Um, and then try to get staff members to get a feel for these different STEM activities that they could set up within their own classrooms. Um, and engage in their, and we're going to really focus on the engineering design at all levels, right, this year. Um, and the hope is, is that the individual teachers will start saying, hey, I need to bring this into my classroom. I can't just rely on our STEM specialists to do all this, because you only see them for like two times a month. So, so we got to do some more things to, to bring that and connect reading and make reading come to life through STEM projects, that, that kind of stuff. Um, and then they're going to put it all together, and then the secondary level, we're also going to be talking about our evil time um, and how we're going to push that out in order to meet high school beyond, uh, criteria in our current college readiness, Portrait of an Elma Eagle, um, and those kinds of things. So, a lot.
Probably a fun day.
Yeah.
I just have to say, my son is absolutely loving working at Fontaine's Apprentice, and he has gotten a lot of kudos for his work. He gets piled up with orders because he's apparently really good at them.
Well, I think it's going to be fun too now for, because, um, some of these industries, as you know, we have apprentices that, and so, they will potentially see some of our students, they will actually, I'm just kind of excited about that whole thing, so.
He's someone covered in grease.
As they are earning their journey level certification and getting paid.
He loses paycheck. Seventeen, he'll be eighteen in two weeks.
And because it's the only way to run industrial equipment as a miner through Malini. So, we're the only school district in the entire region who runs a full registered apprenticeship, only during levels certification.
And this year, we were able to place eight students in five different, um, industries. We, we brought on three new industry partners.
Cool.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's pretty exciting. It's a lot, it's a big lift, but it's, it's, uh, it's fun to watch, though.
The last piece, I've been reached out, I was reached out to by, um, a, the CFO of WASDA, um, who, um, now, we've probably seen his name somewhere. Um, it's a, be a Josh Collette, community member, but works for the State School Boards Association. School boards are required to do a required training. This isn't a presentation, it is just a, we've been reached out that they can do trainings by about twenty people. Um, so I reached out to Oakville, McClary, and SATS up to see if the boards would be open to doing a combined training, which four boards would be, uh, four boards would be twenty people. And if Josh was open to setting up a required WASDA training, it would be a public board meeting. It would actually be a five public board meetings happening at the exact same time, between the four public board meetings happening at the exact same time of all four boards. Um, but then having WASDA do the required WASDA training for all boards, and just getting it kind of done in one go. So, then that way, you're not burning time at the WASDA conference.
I like that idea.
And that training is a diversity training.
Yeah, it's that required training. Um, I'm just seeking guidance on how to pursue. My recommendation would be doing a, um, since it was, be, be originated by Elma, where the Barter District.
You'd like to host it.
Well, we'd host, um, we'd host, but it would also be doing the, um, probably do the poll, once of all the boards, and trying to find a date that works well with all of the boards. It's going to be a special board meeting. And then just making sure that we can have close to that twenty board member rating. So, reaching back out to Josh, getting some dates that he thinks that he can make work, and then trying to do a double poll based on the balance.
I'm down, I'm down, good.
Perfect. And we'll be moving forward on a find board training, and I'll get back to the other superintendents on what we're doing.
First, it's kind, um, not for, I mean, probably for down here, but.
Par for the course here.
Well, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have.
I think it'd be nice to know that the local board.
It probably isn't. I'm sure it's easy to get out.
Yeah. I think just seeing a little camaraderie between local boards and just to have like some shared relationship, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah. Other people, because, um, McClary, I don't know. Anybody else, you know, or Oakville.
Okay.
All right, that's all I needed. I just needed, uh, guidance and recommendation, and I'll move forward.
Perfect. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on into executive session for thirty minutes, so will be no action taken. And we will be back out in.
We will enter at seven twenty-one and come out at seven fifty.
You want to say seven twenty-two, because I already said twenty-one.
Hi, Megan.
Twenty-one is fine.
Thank you, guys.
Make motion and adjourn the meeting.
A second.
This is a motion made in seconded, all favor.
Aye.
No. We need to grant the motion.